Roll call.
Can I get a council packet? I don't even have one of them.
Here. Everyone needs to hit their button. When you wanna talk, hit that red button. They'll turn it on and off. Red is muted. And make sure that the end of that thing is pointed at your mouth. If it's too high, it'll do that.
Yeah.
So should we test it?
Yeah. You might need to be turning it down. We'll work on that and don't hit it.
I'm not gonna hit that.
Maybe you'll watch. Someone does something still. Still. He is. Still on it. Very bad. I should turn it off. I heard it. Okay, roll call.
Mark.
Here.
Erica.
Here.
Jeremy.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
MC.
You.
And JJ is absent.
Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen.
How much grace is heaven to Father, we thank you for this day which is here in us. Father, we thank you for who you are and the way you blessed us each in our city. We pray that you continue to bless our city and be with the city workers. Protect and guide them, be with our police department, fire department, Lord, as they protect us. We ask you to protect them. We ask you to forgive us all where we've failed you, Lord. Pray this meeting, though, is not contentious. In Christ's name we pray.
They tested these things with. But it is actually different tonight.
Maybe the person that put all this in should be here per if it continues.
We would bring it back if it continues, but then it could be the way those were running. They tried to do it and tested it from here to be sure that the sound wasn't doing this. They didn't do it for them, but it is now, obviously. I think what they have to say that I do, maybe next meeting they'll be good for this.
Maybe not one mic on, do you think? Maybe we can try yours and everybody else have them off.
Try that.
And if it squeals, then.
It's part of it. If you aim it lower and have it closer to you, that's supposed to be pointing further out into the room. So the closer they are and the lower they're tilted, the more likely it is to miss.
Okay, well, if they could just come next meeting.
Okay.
Whatever you got as planning or council.
Okay. Okay, next item is approve the agenda for tonight.
Actually, I'd like to amend it.
Okay.
Can you put on follow-ups the the lift station by two?
I have that. I don't have it written in here, but I have that follow-up as part of my comments tonight.
But I would really like it on the agenda.
Okay.
For moving forward until it is up and running with no issues. So I would really like it on follow-ups.
Sure.
Until everything is resolved.
Where was that location at, Erica?
Um, fairway valley.
The new lift station.
The new lift station. And just until it's resolved, that's my only amendment.
Any others? Do I hear a motion to approve as amended? So moved. Got a motion by MC, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second by Jeremy. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. That is approved. Next item is the January twenty eighth minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Erica, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by MC. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign, and that is approved. Financial reports for the city financials, do I hear a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Got a motion by Mark, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy, any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
There are several items in here that are way over budget already. And I'm warning about those. I know one is legal, one is. The engineering. But. Planning. Three hundred and sixty-six point three percent. Due to some subs and memberships. We budgeted fifty, uh, year-to-date fifty-four ninety-five, and we budgeted fifteen hundred.
Page thirteen.
Do you know?
Not that many of the fire fireworks. So I don't know what finals.
It was just dues, subs, and memberships. Spent fifty-four hundred ninety-five dollars compared to the budget fifteen hundred.
Yeah, heard that. Guarantee I haven't spent fifty-four hundred dollars on dues and subscriptions, so I'm not entirely certain. I mean, the most expensive thing that we purchased was tablets for the planning commission to look at the package and stuff electronic. And that's about half of that, so. Unless something was just coded in the wrong line, we got it in the wrong line, I'll have to go back and investigate what we did.
I know we just had a bill, it's twenty-four hundred dollars to pay for the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning, and that was the dues and subscriptions for our annual dues for that.
Okay, that's something I don't see, but I don't know that.
That has always come out of administrative.
Yeah, we thought that was coming out of the planning, wasn't necessarily.
Because that's based on our entire city's population, and they don't strictly deal with planning, they deal with transportation.
I don't quote bills, I just pay them.
Yeah, I just, I mean, that's, but that's why, that's part of it right there.
Yeah, you said you're what, fifty-four hundred?
Yeah, that's twenty-four hundred.
Yeah, so there's.
Almost twenty-five hundred.
So does that need to be corrected?
It'll be corrected.
I would say let's go back through, we'll get in, potentially we'll cut it some days.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Anything else? Do I have a motion, or we did a motion in seconds? All in favor, say aye.
Do we want to table it?
Did what?
Do we want to table it until we figure out what went amiss with that?
We just figured out what went amiss, we're over that, or half of it.
Do you want to table it?
If you wish to table it, you can table it.
I want to table it until that's put in the right spots.
Okay. Uh, I got a motion to table, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. That's tabled. Next item is the. Water and sewer financials, do I hear a motion to approve? So we've got a motion by MC, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. That one's approved. Next item is the fire department report.
So essentially guys, our board of ISL, we went from a four to three in the city, and then from a six to four in the county part. Um, we were probably at seven eight points off of the two in the city. Um, and I think when we give a ladder truck, I'm after an amendment, and I think we'd get a two. Cause ladder trucks, four points, and then we give us a quarter track of using Rogers or something. Whenever we get back, and we're just a few other things, I don't know what it is. Um, this month, we've done eighty-one calls so far this year, or this month, another part of the business month we've had without natural disaster or something. So it's been busy this month. Um, also the car, I was talking about the truck last month at the work session. So the car, the car truck is at the shop right now. Probably the deal's gonna be around seventeen to eighteen thousand dollars to get it fixed. The car is gonna give a set truck. And I talked to Justin, just the way I figured it, and I'll get all the information from him. And then the car is working on getting us some time on stuff, so next time somebody will have to give it to us. Any questions on that?
So we just pay for the repairs and then they give it to us?
Yeah, so. Um, it's a two thousand four Pierce, fifteen, twelve fifty UPM, but the truck's solid, just had some little sense of engine issue. Think once I can get those fixed, we can do it.
Like that price?
Yeah. So, yeah, whenever they called me yesterday, they said, hey, we're just gonna get a vehicle. I'm talking later for today.
What kind of truck is that?
It's a two thousand four Pierce, an engine, it's an engine twelve hundred fifty UPM, it's a single man cab or two man cab. It's short, it's easier for getting in and out of the car, not as fast, but. As far as, we just had it tested last month, and it's all good to go, so.
Good deal.
Um, and then on the agenda is also for the, the way to pass it, but I don't have any more. Any question?
Did we get involved in the fires and people leak?
We did not. Usually we stay on this side of the rivers.
Sure.
Every gallon of water, we're not giving warehouse fire room over there, but usually we stay on this side.
Okay.
My goals are to buy a water. But we've had several, I think, I emailed the buyer of the Hyphal, we had the alley car, I had the Hyphal we assisted them with last month, so. Usually Hyphal, we'll sit up in, or probably get our pool system.
Any issue with building or?
Uh, they're working on it. That's still in the works. So it is looking forward. I talked to Justin's partner, I guess, or Susan. Um, I sent, I emailed some photos, but I think so. That's, looks like it's looking forward, but if that's all the information that I have, yes, I'm glad since.
Are they gonna be able to get the roof fitted before?
That's on works.
Justin, you should invite him in.
We've had, um, the city retained an engineer. This thing's all, is it? Uh, the city has, uh, retained an engineer to look at the roof, I think. But I've met with the, uh, I've met with the chief. Uh, Susan in my office has been working on it, cause she has some experience with this very tissue and some other cases. Um, but, uh, uh, the last I had heard from a couple of weeks ago was, uh, that they were getting a, um, a roofing company to get up on, up on their chief, and that's, that's what the last thing that I.
He did have a look at it.
Okay.
Uh, he came a couple of weeks to look at it. Um, she told me last week you wanted some other information, so I emailed that third day. And so, uh, engineer has heard that we had.
But he's preparing kind of a report to us on what the issue is, and, um, I have seen it, yes, I don't think it's been completed yet, but I've achieved, once it is, we can probably achieve it. I'll, I'll take you guys.
Please report.
Don't really have anything, uh, to report other than the fact that we just filled that last position. Hire a guy, just gonna start on Friday. Um, but other than that, other than the stats you have in front of us, everything's running pretty smooth. Can't complain, I have no complaints, so everything running good.
So we're fully staffed now?
Fully staffed. For now.
On a different subject, on Miss May on that property next to the city hall, have we done anything with that or not? No, I talked to him about it. When I talked to him about it, he was not ready to sell or even entertain an offer at this time because he's looking for something else to invest his money in when he gets it, and he's not interested until he finds something. If you want, we can. Yeah, I'll be quiet. We'll listen. Would y'all have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Next is water and sewer department. Oh, I'm sorry, skip planning, land, not planning.
We're not airborne, you are. You are too. I mean, four is planning work for council, not a lot, nothing new before y'all came this month. Uh, you know, most of the stuff that we talked about in the planning work session last month is still holdovers from a previous month that, you know, been made aware of and discussed. We've got the rezoning for the lost park, um, they're working on creating kind of a new site plan within the ones with the PZD. So we're already really moving forward with that. We're supposed to be bringing us some new material, uh, probably it's gonna be another, you know, month at least before we're ready to move forward with this stuff. So this is one to table at the. Planning commission, you know, the third this month, so. It's gonna not be ready, probably in a month later. Um, we've got the city's a tail subdivision case order, this was also tabled at the March third, um, work session. It's, you know, you know, decisions were made for, or March third, regularly, well, decisions were made at this work session. We're still working through some debt. We've given them a first engineer review comments, they're still working to get those comments back to us. Um, we do have a rezoning for R and E family investments. This is property that is located to the south of what is going to be the new Hillcrest subdivision on Ford and Brown Road, kind of on the backside of that. They had previously asked to rezonate this to R one. Um, in their engineering, they're looking at street stuff outs and trail continuation. They would like to revise their zoning, now that kind of works a little bit further through their engineering to go to R two. So a little bit, you know, slightly smaller lots. Um, I don't think there's still gonna be any issues with that. You know, they're larger lots than the adjacent, it still fits within, you know, the scope and kind of feel that area down there, so. Um, but that, in theory, should come to a real next month.
Is that gonna attach to Hillcrest then?
Yes, ma'am.
So three, it'll be Brentwood, Hillcrest, and then this, how many homes are, are they looking at there?
Well, originally R one, it was like maybe thirty. With R two, they. It's hard to tell, I mean, I don't have a flat, so I don't know. I would, it's not gonna double, like, it's not, they're not gonna go from thirty to sixty, I mean, they're not.
Somewhere between thirty to sixty homes.
I would say probably closer to forty. Yeah, that, that's, that's a guess, you know, it might be fifty.
And here that stoplight that you've been talking about, like on Ford would be even more, so they were doing a, um, what do you call it? Traffic study?
Yeah, like, once we get to the subdivision part of it, you know, we basically can tap into the subdivision year at this point.
Well, it's not gonna, unless the Hillcrest is built out, it's not gonna change anything.
Yeah, I would say the traffic study won't, you know, any different information than when Hillcrest subdivision did.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Um, another thing that we did, um, at the planning work sessions, the R W P wanted to have a presentation on the green infrastructure, along with that kind of element. Uh, they kind of highlighted some of the programs that they offered, resources that they can provide. This is something that they were kind of just wanting to broaden their scope of, and they had asked that, you know, we do a kind of hearing presentation for them, so. It was really good, um, looking forward to, you know, some of the things that, you know, we may have part in the future, so. And then, uh, general things, you know, at the previous reporting, I talked about, you know, continuing to work on the vision plan program, and now I'm actually planning all these things. We said, yes, continue to work on the zoning code now that, you know, we finished the subdivision code. And then, um, Barbara's given me some rough drafts of the master street plan and future land use plan that we've been working on. They're gonna refine those a little bit, get those set out planning before we start the process of planning commission at this next meeting. It's not something where we, I'm looking for them to refer by the means at the next meeting, but we'll start the process and then review that, so. That is really all I have for this. So, so I'll just say the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next is water and sewer committee. Our water and sewer department, I'm sorry. I will hit you quick. The water loss went down, we didn't have a meeting last month due to the fact that the city engineer wasn't available, and I wasn't available, so we decided not to have the meeting. There wasn't that many new items to tend up. The water loss has gone down as expected, but definitely it's not where we want it to be. I wish they were working on it, however, the open ticket has gone down. There's one open ticket that I'm gonna ask Will to speak to it in just a minute. As far as the engineering report goes, I guess Daniel is not here, so we can wait on that until, or. Uh, the engineering, uh, he is in, or there on spring break, so there's not someone to be here. So Will, on that ticket number, on ticket number two eight nine nine two, could you bring some, can you explain where we at on that, that's pretty old?
Yes, um, that's, the way I've been sort of recorded is high and low priority. That's in the low priority folder just because it's a matter of documenting where there's air leaks about far. Um, so we see the wall thing, we're gonna find out where they are, take pictures for document purposes. But it's not costing the city any money, which is what we've been focused on.
So what do we have as far as model links that we're working on and?
Yeah. So one popped up yesterday that we still need to fix. And then as far as what water leaks, we've, we've pretty much gotten down, you have the water loss report.
Yeah.
You can see, we've got the one on, two on Allen Street, which are leaking pretty bad, um, and that is actually three one, seven one one. And that one is going to require some coordination because we're gonna have to lay all new water main along Allen Street. Um, so it's gonna require some coordination between the operator director and our contractor. I've been trying to set a date, but we're all, you know, so busy, so it's just kind of falling through the cracks. Uh, and then we have three open leak cards, which are kind of the same story, they're a little more of an undertaking. And so it's just a matter of availability for everyone.
So I know water loss went down to forty-nine percent, and definitely it's good, but it's not where we want it to be, so do you think that could help that?
Absolutely, I mean, uh, the water loss was eight point eight million gallons between those three leak cards and Allen Street. We're looking at forty million, so that should cut, just those four fixes should cut it in half. Um, and then you can see the customer side leaks that aren't being registered, there's another two and a half million, so. According to this, you know, that's eighty-one percent of counter water loss. Then we know where it's going.
We could get to twenty-five percent, twenty, twenty-five percent, that's the ideal.
Yeah, and just a few repairs, like I said, those water mains being replaced will cut that down.
And I know this, you know, down some cleanup by the road over there, thank you, nice job, clean it up, I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a question. Where is the abandoned house located?
Um, over on Keelings Springs, it's four D B, uh, highway coming in. But there's, there's another house that's on the same side that we can't abandon, so.
Thanks. You know, good job, glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
As far as the staffing goes, I guess you had two open, you guys send a unit before that.
Yes, we, uh, have offered jobs to two people, it's just a matter of background check and drug screening, just one.
Great, thank you.
But they both accepted.
Great, thanks.
So is this the truck that I am asked about?
Yes, um, so I actually reached out to a vendor on March thirteenth, and they said that they would give, they would stay in the market and give you a full detailed report of what's available. And I called them this morning, and they completely covered the practice, so this is something I think I had there last minute. Um, so next, the work session, I'll have.
Um, could you, when you're looking at this, cause I know you said it would be good to have this bigger truck instead of like a trailer option you had mentioned, also I want to ask you the question. Um, could you look at, if you have time, cause I know you're very busy and you do a very good job, how much we could have saved, like in, from the time that you came on to if the next, through this month to our next, like, um, voting session, how much you could have saved this year if you would have had this truck and everything, it would give our city to kind of give us, um, but again, hopefully that other company will get back to you.
Yes.
Um, because if, if we're gonna invest in something, it would be nice to know how much it would save, how, how long you had to wait for each individual work order to, to, um, to get it.
Well, that varies, but I could tell you how much we were spending on contracting.
Okay.
For.
For, for the things that this truck has?
Yes.
Okay, do you know that?
Not at the top of my head.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I can tell you.
That'd be great, I think.
Basically, you like justification.
That, yes.
I can, I can.
Okay.
I have a question. We buy a truck like this, where's it gonna sit?
Good question, uh, probably the yard right there. We have what we have.
That's what I'm afraid of.
Yeah.
With the other equipment, there's competition with all of us.
Well, I'm looking into where we could give her that soil pile that's taking up, you know, a quarter of that yard. Um, once that pile of dirt is gone, then that freezing loss base.
And the project plan is being worked on by Daniel right now, that I hope to be presented the next work session, her address, housing, some of that stuff, and.
Will be done before we send. A little winter.
Uh, if we approve it and move forward with it, yes.
I'm sure I'm tired of stuff sitting out in rust and freezing, so. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Yep.
Engineers, as we mentioned, are out today, so attorneys report.
Uh, well, good evening, um, I guess, a, a couple of things, uh, we are in spring break, legislative session um, as well, and I want to highlight three bills in particular, you may have heard about them, but they're, um, they'd be very impactful, uh, to cities, and, uh, two of them are zoning. Uh, one of them is SB four five six, S, so Senate Bill four five six. Uh, one of them is S B four five six, S, so Senate Bill four five six. Um, and this bill would eliminate single-family zoning and would require, uh, us to approve, um, residential unit duplex, triplex, quadplex in a single district zone. So, as you spot right, um, and so it's, it has other parts to it as well, uh, that are, that are, that are fairly, fairly serious. Uh, but essentially, if, if somebody wanted to build a, a quadplex in a city, there would be no zoning requirement for it. It could be placed wherever, uh, wherever that person wanted to put one. So, obviously, that would be very impactful. Um, uh, a lot of, uh, uh, cities have reached out on, on this particular one. Um, um, and are engaged on that, that discussion. Uh, the other one is H B one seven five four, so House Bill one seven five four. Uh, the House Bill seventeen fifty-four would really make it difficult for us to enforce zoning regulations. It would put a financial penalty on the city if it opposed a regulation that didn't meet a high, high standard. Uh, and it also sort of, it also changes the definition of nuisance within zoning to make, uh, uh, our ability to deal with a nuisance property reach a higher standard as well. So, both of those are, are very concerning land use bills, um, that are, that are out there. Um, the third one is, um, S B three nine four. It has to do with your, with the city's portion of the sales tax that it receives from the county tax. So, the county has a sales tax, there's a portion of it, uh, obviously, the, the, the biggest portion of the county's sales tax is collected within the cities. Uh, of, of Bend County and Washington County and some of the bigger counties. Uh, you all receive an allotment of that sales tax, that's a part, you see, you see what, you see what the city sales tax collects, you see what the sales tax, what the county sales tax collects. Um, right now, we bond off of that, so when you had built, uh, fire stations or, uh, sewer lines, projects, water lines, uh, you bonded over your city and county sales tax. Um, this one, bill would allow the county to call for an election to divert some of that sales tax, or some of all of the sales tax, from the city to the county for county needs. Obviously, the argument against that is that's money that's collected within the city. Uh, and, uh, that, uh, uh, doing so would be a subsidy, you know, you're sending money from outside the city to rural, rural parts of the county. Um, the, the other question would be that, or concern is, is that it might impair the ability to bond projects in the future. So, those are three pieces of legislation that are all out there, and they've been kicked around a little bit. Uh, I don't really have a good sense right now of the direction, uh, that they're going, uh, but they have raised a lot of eyebrows over the last couple of weeks.
Who's behind those bills, I'm asking, from President.
So, S B, um, uh, the, the one on single-family zoning, um, for, S B four fifty-six was filed by Senator Petty and Representative Burks. Um, uh, H B seventeen fifty-four was filed by Representative Gonzalez. Um, and S B three ninety-four, I think, came from Brian, or Senator Brian.
I think it was, uh, it was Senator Brian, and there's an added caveat to the binding that makes it more troublesome. Not only does it reduce your income that you can bond against, but it also has a statement in there that, uh, you cannot commit the county sales tax to bonds. So, it would, e- essentially, you would have the use of the money that they allow you to keep, but you couldn't even borrow against it because the one, you don't know for sure that they'll allow you to keep it the next.
Yeah, and of course, it would have to be an election, and, um, uh, majority of the voters in Bend County live within the cities, and so the city voters would have to say, yes, take our money and spend it elsewhere, which may not be likely, but it does have that side effect of impairing future bonds, it could, because of the possibility of election. So, um, all three of these have kind of gotten their base attention quite a bit. And I'm sure David's heard quite a bit, but on the, on the planning side of those two that I mentioned as well, there's been a lot of outreach. But any, uh, any ability to reach out and talk to, uh, talk to your representatives is, would be important in this matter.
I have a question. So, we would still collect, the city would still collect the tax even though they don't get the money?
They don't get a portion of the money, what is the reality?
So, if we're collecting, if a city's collecting that tax, but they don't get their portion, can the city charge them a, a fee for collection?
I don't know. Uh, I mean, we don't, we're sent the county sales tax from D F A direct, right? Uh, so, uh, it's remitted to us kind of at the, at the end of the line. And, uh, I think what would happen if the, I thought that what would happen if we build a new law would be that D F A would just redirect that directly to the county. That amount directly to the county.
When they say that we collect the tax, ultimately, most businesses are in cities. And so your bigger cities are collecting the lion's share of it. We are collecting some of all the stuff that we have in town, but much less. And it is dividing between all of the cities within the county in an equal portion based on their population. So, the unincorporated areas, the county keeps their portion. We would get our portion based on our population and so on down the line. Uh, for some cities, I was speaking with one of the representatives this past week. Uh, the city of Rogers actually collects twenty-two million a month, give or take, it always, it does fluctuate. But the month they were looking at, they collected twenty-two million in, uh, uh, the county tax, but they collected thirty-three million in city tax. And in the case of Cave Springs, which when they met, uh, last week, I made the point that for Cave Springs, we collect roughly, uh, seventy thousand, sixty-five to seventy thousand in city tax. But we actually collect a hundred and sixty thousand or so, uh, month out of, uh, the county tax. And when we became a city of the first class and that number increased, we invested that in our fire department that serves the county. And I made that point, that this isn't something that is, that we're collecting this, uh, great deal and, and elsewhere, and you're a small part of it. I said, this is something that we've invested in of the city and county area because our department, that's their, uh, response area, their, their district runs into the county.
So, my point is, okay, if, if we're collecting for it, and we're not gonna give the money, let's charge them a fee for it fifty percent.
I, I think, I think what D F A collects and then distributes, so I don't, I don't think we collect.
Yeah, it's done through the county, it's done through our businesses, but it's paid through the state, and the state has a fee for collection.
This is collected simply to.
Yeah, you could go straight with the D F A.
Like any other source.
I heard that.
Yeah.
Do they have any, I've been there for these, do they, what's the?
I, well, I think it's, it's, it's everybody having needs, and, uh, counties certainly have needs. So, you know, look at it from their side, and they have, uh, you know, their existing jails to operate, you know, roads, many miles of roads, uh, and they do, they do a lot of things, and so, uh, I think that's where it's, where it's come from, just like everybody else, they have, they have needs. Uh, I, I, to that end, I think it would be good to, um, uh, come together and have some dialogue on that, rather than, rather than this bill.
How about the single-family and duplexes?
Oh, that one, no, I, I mean, I think that, I think there's a notion that, um, uh, decisions that cities are making are, have led to, uh, the lack of housing. Uh, and so this is a pretty blunt instrument to, to do that, because obviously, it'll affect everybody's, it'll affect everybody, uh, significantly, and so, um, you don't, I, David, was there anything else, or on, on the other side of that argument, um, that you can recall on, on, on what happened? I'm assuming it's the, pretty much a, a call to address housing.
I don't know, I'm sure. Um, I mean, there are a bunch of housing, you know, that, that, I think it does, it's kind of a, a, it's kind of a, it's hard to say that, you know, the way they're looking at it's right. They're allowing not just duplexes, but it's allowing, you know, your neighbor to put a tiny on the back yard that can be on wheels. You know, it's not, I mean, there's, there's a lot to it, so I would recommend pulling the bill, I know the mayor's got a printed bunch off, and it can even, while he's asked, and he knows, or he's a parent company, but I, I would vote it all, because there, there's a whole a lot of different odds and ends to offering that kind of hard to.
So, how would that, how would that affect these homeowner associations? That avoids that?
Covenants are, are, uh, excluded, so, uh, the, the covenants would still be enforceable by homeowners.
Through the court system. They're gonna have to sue and go through a lawsuit.
So, as a representative in the state, that we vote on this with their big homes, I'm assuming, they're exempt from it if they have a, an H M O that they're in a real gated community. How convenient.
If you're in a gated community, you set your rules in a bad environment.
Yeah.
Well, if they have improvement, this big, that would be the same.
You know what, it doesn't mention.
It's just, it's just covenants is all it mentions, and not all subdivisions have B O As, not all subdivisions have covenants. And, uh, the ones that do, if someone tries it there, it requires someone, the property owners association or the individuals in there to pull their money and file a lawsuit.
I think, I think ultimately what it ignores is that, you know, a tremendous part of the driver of cost is land value and, and materials. Like, right, that's, those are the, the drivers, and all those are real expensive right now. Uh, but, uh, but yeah, it's a, uh, it's a real problematic, I mean, I think it's, it's kind of taking a hatchet, you know.
They even made a comment, you know, in the argument for it, that cities regulate, regulatory, uh, capacity of cities, the permitting, the inspections and inspection fees, uh, would act, or actually add twenty percent to each home. And that's just blatantly false, and so it just, it, there's a lot wrong with it. Uh, most cities are opposing, are actively opposing it. I have not heard of any city that supports it. Every city I've heard of is actively, uh, opposing it, and, uh, there is a, a ground swell in opposition. There's a new one I was made aware of today, that's, uh, S B five eighteen. I haven't had a chance to delve as deeply into it as I'd like to, and I don't remember exactly how it affected the cities. But that's something that I just found out about late this morning, and I'll be looking at further. Thank you, just, yeah.
Well, if y'all have any questions about that, let me know.
What are you wondering, is that what the bill on this?
Well, they, it'll come back to session after spring break, and, uh, it can go anytime. It just kind of depends on the committee's schedule, so, uh, I don't know yet.
So, the committee's ready to bring it forward, it'll come forward for a vote, so it's very sad.
Yeah, it's not very deliberate. It, it can go, go.
There is a, I know we've discussed this before, behind the, uh, American, American building, it's on a little bitty lot that's falling in.
Yeah.
That needs to be disposed of, and now there's one, or had one across from the city park. So, is, is there nothing that can be done about that?
The issue with, uh, yes, there is something that can be done, and we can, in the past, what we've done is sent a, uh, so, it gets started by a letter from the city to the, to the property owner. Uh, what I usually do when we do that is we look up to see whether there's a bank or lien holder. Uh, can we send a letter to them as well? Because usually that's, if there is a bank, that's what gets, uh, uh, gets the attention of the homeowner. Um, and then it kicks out a process. There can be a ticket. Um, and, but ultimately, the ultimate remedy that the city has is to raise and remove. And that's a process that would come back to you, uh, ultimately, but the problem is the collection of that money. Uh, currently, I believe that this, that the city can get priority over other liens, uh, for the collection cost, but only up to a certain amount. And that amount hasn't changed in a long time. So, it's likely, um, that, that, that the city would have to come forward with money in the end if there's liens. Uh, but, uh, and then, you know, and then you have to wait for the liens to get paid off. If they don't get paid, they go to the lien commissioner to get sold. So, it's, it's one of those things that have, that if it does work out to the city's benefit, or at least to the, to the restoration of the city's, uh, uh, bank account, it could be two years down the line, just to help the way that the collection of those, that taxes, uh, cost. Um, there is a bill currently to raise that amount, um, and, uh, that's one that's been pushed by the municipal league. And if that one passes, that would help, because obviously, the cost to raise and remove a house is very different than what it was twenty years ago. But, uh, but, Mike, to that end, uh, we've gotten a lot of response in the past from sending a letter, doing the ticket, getting the lien holder involved. And I've stayed noted those two. Uh, I've got a letter of reviews in the past, and I can get that over to the city to, to send it in. I guess we will be getting it too, uh, obviously, moment season, and, uh, if there's a problem right now, then it's only gonna get worse over the summer.
Okay.
Yeah, Burks, Attorney, Attorney's Report.
Uh, I want to make the council aware that we are gonna be closing the Fire Department Capital Improvement Fund. Right now, we have spent every penny in that account, and there's no need to keep it open at this point. This was the account that we used to build the fire department, so it is at a zero balance at this point. So, we'll be closing that out, and I don't know if, do we have to bring a resolution to close that account, or do we just, can I just cut, close it?
I think the bank may, if the bank requires it, we can certainly do that, but I don't think it has zero balance, I don't like it.
Yeah, I've closed an account that's had a zero balance without it. I just need to make the council aware that we are closing that account.
I don't think it's required, that I know of, it's just if the bank is it.
And then, on March the fifth, I received an email from the bank, um, wanting to sit down and have a, a meeting with myself and the mayor regarding an email that they have received from mayor wanting to remove my A C H duties. Um, which the A C H duties are, uh, duties that would take to remove, uh, my duties to do direct deposits. This was done after a council meeting that we all had at the end of February, and it was a week after that meeting that this was done. I was unaware of it until I received the, the email from the bank asking to sit down and have a meeting. Um, I told them that I was unaware of this. I didn't know of any duties where the council approved me to be removed from those duties, because at the last of my knowledge, the council said there would be no changes made to my financial duties. So, I'm letting you all know that that was done, that I had no idea that any of that was done, until I got the email from the bank. Um, I tried to schedule a meeting, uh, with the bank, per their request, and the mayor refused to sit down and have a meeting with them and myself, so the meeting never happened. So, I just want to let the council know that that's, that was done, and I don't know why.
And she never asked me why. She never tried to schedule a meeting with me. I would have flatly met with them.
I have the email right here, Mayor.
There's no, I was not asked to sit down with them. Uh, the actual reason why is because y'all voted to, uh, do direct, or to do payroll services and move those services, and there were a set of rules added to that resolution that was not reviewed by or approved by this council that would have, uh, basically eliminated that except for in the, uh, allowing the data entry of the time cards. That is not payroll services. And we have been in touch with the bank.
I followed the resolution. I gave them a copy of the resolution. And we are working on getting an appointment with the bank to sit down and discuss this very thing. I've not hidden anything. I did it, uh, within a couple of days once everything was signed and in place. And I did that, uh, in accordance with the resolution and my, uh, ability to do that job or to assign that job. And that is what I've done. So, that is, uh, what is actually proceeding at this time.
I specifically asked the council at that meeting what my job duties would be. And the council stated, and I put it in the minutes, that nothing changed financial duties with my position. The only thing that was going to be changing regarding the payroll was the time and data entry. And that's it. I, I asked that question at the council meeting and they specifically made that crystal clear. The only thing that was changing was the time card entry. Nothing was going to be changing regarding the financial status of my duties.
The question at the council meeting had to do with paying bills and had to do with...
No, sir.
Yes, and had to do with paying, uh, the taxes, the withholdings. And there was nothing, uh, voted on, nothing approved, saying that the resolution would not be, uh, handled as it was approved. And the resolution stated that, uh, payroll duties would go to me or my designated. And payroll duties include transferring the funds at payroll.
I don't think the council understood that then because that's not what they said at the meeting.
Well, that is how it was proceeded and that's where we are today.
So, again, I'm asking the council, you need to understand what's going on? And I need to know what my duties are as your city treasurer. From the council, I would like to know this because it is not what is going on at all. So, there needs to be some clarification on my duties, on my responsibilities for payroll going forward. Because the first time we did payroll, it was a disaster. I mean, it had to be, uh, the first time payroll was done with the new payroll clerk, um, it literally took ten different times to do payroll. It was, it, it was a disaster. Friday, when we had payroll, again, it was a disaster again. And we have, um, several employees right now that, um, I've got eight different employees that their payroll is incorrect. Um, I brought it up to them, told them that they were wrong. I have some employees that were, um, paid improperly. I have some employees that were overpaid, some employees that were underpaid. I have some employees that did not get their overtime paid. I have some employees that were deducted medical benefits from the employees who were not eligible for benefits, where the employee had to pay for the benefits and the employer had to pay for the benefits, which they didn't have benefits. Um, I've got employees who did not earn a check. I have some council members that got paid that didn't, that wasn't supposed to get paid. And then I've got an exempt employees that I'm unsure if they even had time off to take as an exempt employee. So, there's, I, I asked her about it and the response I got was, we'll just fix it on the next payroll. Well, what that does is that throws your federal taxes off, it throws your state taxes off, it throws all of your benefits off. Yes, it can be fixed, but what's happening is, is it's, it's not correct this month. And it won't be correct next month either because they're going to be different because you're fixing an error. So, if we continue to go down this path, it's not going to be pretty. So, I'm just going to make sure that you all are aware right now what you're getting yourself into.
Can I make you a little more aware? She, there were three major problems that were all addressed on Thursday. She, the clerk found them herself. They were all addressed on Thursday and you payroll, uh, the corrected payroll was provided. And it was not because she wasn't able to put it in herself. It was not paid in the correct and as corrected and therefore carried over a significant part of this and made those errors when they could have been fixed in advance and were provided the collect, the corrected in advance. The other problem that we're currently, that she's not aware of is on the February seventh payroll report. After ten years of doing this, she also caught three mistakes there where one employee was paid, worked eighty-one hours and, and had one hour of overtime and was paid one hour of regular time and eighty hours of overtime pay. That's before she was even here. And so, there's a number of things that are going to be...
That's the first time I have heard of that and nobody has said anything to me about it.
That's because we just found it this week while she was in the middle of addressing some of the other issues.
Okay.
And, but I, I've got it on my report.
Neither here, that's, that's fine.
I've talked to the supervisor about it and he has stated that it is a concern and he's addressing it with his employee.
Okay, that's fine, but I'm concerned about this payroll right now.
I am too.
And you said there's three errors that have been corrected? Well, there's more than three employees.
There were three errors that were corrected in advance. There was one that...
These, none of these were in advance, Mayor. None of these were in advance.
She had you a report on Thursday and emailed it to you on Thursday
She didn't find all of the corrections.
And it was never sent to, or never processed by you.
That's correct because none of her, not all of the errors were fixed.
And you didn't discuss any other errors till the following day and you did a list.
Here's the email.
Can I interrupt here?
Here's the emails, right here.
Can I interrupt here?
Sure.
Do you all communicate by phone and person or text?
I have sent emails upon emails to sit down and train Stephanie, to show her, to teach her to how to do payroll and nothing.
What about with the mayor?
And she has, and Stephanie requested, uh, assistance more than once and nothing.
Here's all of Stephanie's emails and not one time has she asked me, asked me for assistance or to train me. Not once.
I don't know how to end this. I, I really don't, but it sure is getting drawn out long to me. I, I don't know what the problem is. But this is really getting out of hand. And I'm getting tired of it, really, really tired of it.
She made significant improvements this time. She did make a couple of mistakes and they are, they were very fixable at the time and chose not to. And we, we, the way we fix it is you let her do the job and be responsible for the job. And right now, she is not allowed to do the job, but you just starstake go in for the job that was done.
I, I think with Mike, um, are you okay? Are you done, Mike?
I am. Yeah.
I think that with any new person in any position, there is a lot of, of learning at any learning curve. I don't know anytime, you know, I did the whole State of Nebraska's tech pay and there was a learning curve to it and I had to be trained. So, um, to do that, and then somebody watched me. We did it together and then I paid the whole state of Nebraska their tax, over five hundred tax. So, there is a level of grace that I think that needs to be given for some errors. Kim, I don't know when you first started, did you hit the ground running, no mistakes? I don't know.
No, I have training.
You had training?
The city hired, hired David Williams to train me how to do my job.
Is that a possibility for this time? We can't, we can't work together?
We're working with, um, CenterPoint and, uh, oh, the HR person that does payroll to line up training our new HR person.
So, we're using our new HR person?
Right. And she's been involved and she has, uh...
Well, that concerns me because that was, I'm worried about that subject going way up in training.
Well, it's, it's being adjusted in the, the range that they were approved for.
Okay, well, um, if they, so are they able to train the new clerk? I, it needs to come to an even ground somewhere. I don't know, Justin, maybe we can mediate this? I don't, I don't know.
I've been, I was at City Hall when the first, um, payroll was, was being performed. I, I wouldn't call them major issues. I think there were, there were certainly some issues, some things to work through. Uh, some of it was software related. Uh, the, uh, one of the issues was how the, the system catches its saves to data because on one of the runs, uh, it did, it did save changes. And so, uh, CenterPoint got involved in that one and, uh, they were, was able to address, yeah, address the issues.
So, not only were having software issues on top of things, that isn't helping either?
Yeah, and it was more like a, 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 you know, user function.
Okay.
You know, making sure that you're, you're getting the, the, the steps through. Um, and certainly there were some, some things that occurred. The, the, uh, one of the issues was, uh, the system will automatically populate kind of withholdings. And if you're a brand new employee, uh, you have to remember to take some of those out because you're not eligible for the first sixty days for certain, uh, for certain benefits. And so, you know, is that a major mistake?
Maybe we're out for the next couple of days.
Is, is that a major mistake or is that, is that a mistake? I would call that, I would call that a mistake. Um, and I think those are going to happen when you're, when you're in the, in the type of transition. Uh, the, uh, some of the others, uh, 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 there's, there's a few of those that are, that are being looked at. Like I said, there were a couple kind of pre-existing, uh, issues that are having to be dealt with. None of them are, 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 in my view, kind of what I see, uh, major on anybody's account. There's some, some errors. I think the thing that is, the issue is that the ACH duties have to do with who has authority in the city to, um, to kind of initiate fund transfers, right? And, uh, the, uh, naturally, Kim has, has, has had that with paying, paying the bills. There's some, uh, bills and, and things that we're able to pay through fund transfer, like some taxes and, and the, the big one of those is, is payroll. Uh, Arkansas law allows that to be done by an official or an employee who has delegated that, that particular authority. And so, the, the, the question that we're working through is setting up, you know, how to set up Stephanie to be able to have that ability to order the funds to be, to be transferred when payroll is ready to be, to be done. There's a timing issue on these things. And if you have to do, uh, a correction, you know, the, 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 the ability to be able to kind of, uh, uh, contact the bank and, and, uh, take those actions is kind of the completion of the, of the payroll process. So, um, I, I've talked to the bank as well. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I think we're planning on trying, trying, trying to work through those issues, but I just want to give you my perspective on it.
So, just Stephanie, I, I understand that, you know, she needs those duties too, but does Kim still need those duties?
Yeah, well, yeah, absolutely.
So, we shouldn't be pulling?
No.
And you didn't request to pull them?
Yeah, uh, uh, Kim absolutely has to have those duties because she, she does.
So, we're duties...
So, it's, it's a question of adding, of, of having Stephanie as, um, uh, an added agent on that, that same line.
So, we're not pulling ACH duties from Kimberly?
Good, because, because she still has, she still has to have that access and those duties to pay.
Okay, that, no, that's great, but I understand why the clerk would need them. The payroll clerk would, would need those additional duties to do payroll. But they should not be pulled from Kimberly.
Right, exactly.
Um, because as I talked about before in the meeting, you know, the elected official, I feel like there should be a full-time person doing, doing the payroll because, you know, like you said, in two years, you might have to, but I do not want your ACH duties pulled. So, you're reassuring us that Kimberly still has her ACH duties.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be appropriate.
And then Stephanie would be added for payroll purposes.
That's, that's correct and, um, you know...
Which makes sense if she's doing payroll.
Right. And, um, I, I think there's a way to do that, that there's an appropriate level of, of, um, checks and balances on it. But having the payroll clerk be able to have that access is important as well. Uh, certainly for timing, it is, but that, it is important as well.
Okay.
Uh, we'll work through it and involve, uh, uh, Kim in those discussions. And I think we can work through it. I, I had a conference, we can, we can work through it.
Okay.
And, uh...
But I guess what threw me off is, is I knew nothing about this. So, all of these discussions were going behind my back without even notifying me. That was what upset me the most. So, you know, if, if, I would have much rather have heard it from the city versus the bank.
Okay.
But the bank told you they were pulling the duty?
The bank told me that the mayor specifically wanted my duties, ACH duties, pulled and then he was going to give them to Stephanie.
And I made it clear to the bank that I was looking for payroll, ability to transfer payroll and that Kim would need to keep the ability to pay bills and to do the...
Sounds like a first standing on the bank's part.
Yeah, I, I had a special with the bank today and they, they understand it's payroll. And there are different options in, in the way that can be done, uh, but, uh, but it's payroll only. I've, I've made that clear.
Okay.
Does anyone make a statement?
I'm sorry.
May I make a statement?
Oh, sure.
I mean, I'd accuse myself of holding and I would continue to do it. But I want to make a statement that's not related to Kim or to Mr. Mayor or anybody else more. As a city, we're supposed to be working with each other as a team. We're supposed to help each other out with here to the prison, folks to order us in the office. And I, it is, I really don't like to hear this back and forth going on because of the fact that when I see that, I understand she shouldn't be, I agree, she shouldn't be hearing it from the, she shouldn't be hearing it from the bank. There should be enough communication and trust. We came to the department, then against Kim, this is what we're going to do. Justin's been involved, you've been involved with Mayor. That is not called for to bank thing. That being said, at the same time, I think when a new payroll comes, our responsibility is making sure that our payroll gets done correctly. It's not, it is Stephanie did it, it's Kim did it. If she has provided support, I don't know why we refused it. We shouldn't be refusing it. If she wants to help Stephanie, then she needs to help Stephanie to train it. We're working as a team, we're not against each other. I don't know, I really want that to be a point that we get it tonight. Maybe we don't go forward again having that issue. If she's willing to offer help, why not offering help? Let's just work together and do it. And I don't, I think, Justin, I want to say that with all respect to you, I do think with issues like that, communication is really important. She should have been notified either by Mr. Mayor or by you. Shouldn't be bank notified there. That is part of how business is done, in my opinion. I've been, I've been in business for years and I know this, this type of thing destroys game work. At the same time, I don't care really who puts it in and who pays it as long as people are getting paid correctly. They have their pay stuff that shows what, how much vacation they got and all that stuff that goes with it, which I'm hoping that was a whole big part of it, correct, Mr. Mayor? And I'm hoping that we get to the point that we got a lot more important issue rather than going back and pored over these issues. Thank you, that's... Next, I have Mr. Mayor's report. And me and Justin were much on the same page tonight. Uh, we continued our opposition to SB four fifty-six and HB seventeen fifty-four that together were essentially in zoning protections for the big location rooms. SB four fifty-six eliminates all single-family homes zones and would own, own, or, would allow someone in the organized subdivision to allow tiny homes on wheels, duplexes, triplexes or quadplexes to their own lot without approval of public or public comment as long as they have enough land to squeeze it in. HB seventeen fifty-four allows the developer to install anything they determine to be the highest use for the property without concern for compatibility or impact on neighboring properties. Both bills would greatly reduce the zoning protections for property owners, silence their ability to have public input. And although there is an exemption for areas with covenants, they are a civil agreement and would require the financial expense and time commitment of a lawsuit to exercise that protection. These are areas that are of grave concern because of what it would ultimately do. And it would do it for the next twenty to thirty years. Uh, you would not be able to undo it once those buildings were built, even if the laws were reverted back. So, that is my, we've been working very hard on that the last couple of weeks and that's, uh, my statement for the night. Next is public comments. Next is public comments.
Stand up here.
Try the mic, uh, try to turn the mic on with that button so it turns green.
It won't work.
Oh, it won't work? Okay, never mind.
So I read one, I have like three comments. One is, I still have trouble hearing in this room and nobody says this is not set up right. The second, I, I think I heard Gary say that the fire rating went down rather than stay the same rate.
That's right.
I'm a red under scissor tail which recently got panicked. If I'm not mistaken, the suggestion then was fire department think we're better, so.
That, that's incorrect, right, Gary? You're going from a four to three and ISO is an increase.
It's, it's getting better.
It is improving. Oh, I thought you said went down.
It went from a four to three, it's sort of, it's sort of like golf.
Lowered back, lowered back, pegged back.
I didn't know here.
Good problem.
I'm drinking nuts.
I'll figure it out, I'll figure it out. The other thing, and I thought whether I was standing here and say this or not, but it's kind of along the lines of M C just there. And as a citizen watching this, and I've never been to other city councils ever in my life, I see the mayor and the city clerk treasurer, I think it appears, that, that both of them seem like nice people. It appears to me you don't talk to each other or there's some issue. And so I don't know what the city council has to do with that, but to me, that's not the way it's gonna work. And so my suggestion, and if you figure out what to do, to work together, whatever, payroll or whatever, and, and not have these devices. Still liking that?
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, this is, uh, this is, this is a good time to talk about my, the S two.
Um, Mayor, they, they were gonna mention their stuff on the fairway and if you could just comment it on your updates.
Sure.
Instead of the, and you can talk about them, you know?
Sure.
Does that work?
Works for me.
Okay. Yeah, if you wanna share your side and the payroll addressed it.
Okay, uh, yeah, so, uh, so, okay, so, uh, my name is Robert Hudson, uh, you're my town, uh, living in Fairway Valley at Coral Rico Beach. Um, I've specifically, I've got a whole list of folks that I'm speaking on behalf of in the neighborhood. I'm happy to provide names and addresses of all the folks, but we've got a whole, there's a whole slew of us that have experienced the same issue, so uh, we're, we're speaking on behalf of, of, of a number of folks. Uh, so I've got, got a couple of different issues. Uh, currently, the, the smell out there is pretty atrocious. Uh, I'm pretty disappointed that, uh, nobody from the engineering office is here. Uh, I understand Daniel's on vacation, but, uh, the fact that the sewer system was turned on live Friday, uh, nobody's here to provide an update from their office, that's, that's pretty disappointing, I would say. Uh, but the, the, the smell out there is, is quite atrocious. Um, it's not just, uh, myself just saying this smells bad. Um, I actually brought a air detector, it's a multi-grade. Um, one of the, uh, one of the gases that it looks toward is hydrogen sulfide, uh, from sewer gas. Uh, I got readings as high as twenty parts per million. Uh, per ocean in I O standards, the allowable standard is ten parts per million. So I'm, I'm getting these double, uh, these safe readings out there, uh, in my yard of what should be acceptable per, uh, ocean in I O standards. Uh, so I'm, I'm, so that would be the immediate concern. Um, my other concern with the lift station in general, um, and I've been, and I've been texting, emailing, uh, phone calls for the last year and a half, it's just about the overall design of the lift station. Um, and everyone through the planning commission, um, I, I really appreciate that both lawyer and mayor brought up, uh, this residential standards that it's from a state. Um, I appreciate the, uh, the look into zoning compatibility, um, because it appears that, that lots of standards, compatibility standards were simply overlooked. Um, two of the, uh, most recent, um, examples have pretty easy on our stain. Um, no lighting was done for this site. Um, if a commercial site was brought into the, into a city, that that would be, that would be a requirement that the engineer provides a photometric plan. Uh, I don't think one's been done, I, I've asked repeatedly if that's been done. Uh, so, uh, myself and Caleb here, uh, we, we went to bed one night, um, to twenty-one thousand humans uh, coming into our backyard. Uh, we, we didn't make calls, we appreciated that those lights haven't turned off. Uh, we've been told that surely we'll be provided. Uh, we haven't seen it yet, uh, I haven't been, uh, provided any information what that would be consisted of, uh, but I, I would hope a photometric plan would, would, would be done, just like any other, uh, project in our city would be done. Um, another issue I've had is, is what, what is the landscape buffer that's gonna be? Uh, again, this is, this is in our plan, in our plan, I'm, I'm happy to walk everybody through, uh, why this should be done, but it's very specific to our, in our plan standards. Um, one, this property is zoned correctly, uh, per our definitions of our standards, it should be, uh, by rights, should be an industrial zone. Uh, could be a conditional use on commercial, um, either one of those, there's a, there's a setback that should, that should be, uh, uh, that should be withheld, uh, that setback was not followed. Um, they, they built that, uh, uh, too close to our parking line for our, for our zoning standards. So again, I really appreciate that the zoning, uh, issues brought up by the city council tonight. Uh, I, 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 I think that's, uh, a good way to develop a city. Uh, I'm a planning commissioner for several years and I appreciate cities that are supportive of this. Um, again, I'm just disappointed that this, uh, this project was, uh, none of its compat- none of its standards for compatibility with residential homes was, was even, uh, take, if it was taken into consideration, uh, so pretty, uh, it's pretty big things were, were either overlooked or missed. Uh, again, didn't go through planning commission, these are things that we would have thought, um, you have planning commission, lighting, landscaping, these are the most serious ones. Um, landscaping specifically, I asked for landscaping plans, uh, was told, yes, we'll provide you landscaping plans. Uh, about eight months later, then I got text messages, emails to back all this up, I'm, I'm happy to send, uh, any of those to anybody who'd like to see them. Um, eight months later, I was finally told, no, landscaping plan has not, uh, been done for this, it will not be done for this. Uh, we'll, we'll put some trees back up there, that's not what I've heard. Um, they've changed, uh, the grading planes out there. Um, it's, it's not going to be, uh, three one slope, uh, standards, this is pretty standard on, on, uh, uh, what you're able to know. Um, there's a small little area that's not gonna happen. Um, it's, it's a pretty busy thing, but, but all of those things add to, um, there, there's, there's a lot of stuff with this project that just simply was not, uh, like our own planning standards was not followed with that. Uh, so, uh, I, my ask would be, um, send this project back to the planning commission and allow it to be going through and taking all the compatibility standards into consideration and make adjustments as in, uh, that, that's something I'd ask. Um, because it's just, oh, every time I ask these questions, uh, just, uh, I, I get no answers. Again, I've asked, I've answered, I've asked questions, I've questioned, uh, Justin, I've sent you, I don't know how many emails and I, I don't get answers. You're not, you're not answering my emails, you just don't. You're, or you, or if you send me, if you send me an email back, um, I, you don't answer the, you just simply don't have the, the questions. Uh, you just simply don't answer the questions, um, that, that I ask. It's, don't answer that, you don't give me any answer of the question you want to answer. Um, I don't answer my question, you know, I'll, I'm happy for these that remember the council. Um, I finally stopped asking, uh, because I wasn't getting any answers. Um, so again, we've got, uh, two parts to the problem, um, one, we've got a pretty atrocious malfunction right now. Uh, we did have a leak out there, I wanted to give props to the, to the city folks who got up and fixed the leak. Uh, we got on a Wednesday night, uh, sewer was actually running down, we got it up pretty, uh, I mean, it was flowing, yeah, I think river going down, I got it. Uh, so I wanna thank the, the, I don't know what city workers came out and fixed it that evening, but they're out there pretty late, uh, with a little maniacs fixed that problem, so, so we appreciate that. Uh, greatly, greatly appreciate them doing that fix, so, so there, so we use some, some of the, from the city staff. Uh, but, um, with, with that smell also by the, um, contractor, that there should be some sort of odor control that is scheduled to turn on May sixth, so we're six weeks out from that. Uh, and we're running, um, some pretty atrocious standards as far as air quality is concerned. Um, as, as measured by my theory, I'm very worried here, so it's not just, it's not just me going in my backyard, it's not like this smells, it's actually, uh, uh, air quality, uh, it's, to me, it's very problematic when we get it, and these be priority, for sure.
Have you contacted the mayor about all this?
Uh, yeah, yes, sir.
Ms. Hand?
Ms. Hand, I replied to each one of the, uh,
I wanna know which one's other.
And I have gotten the, uh, turn, or the engineers involved. He will be receiving his, I found out at like five thirty tonight, he will be receiving, uh, not only is there going to be a landscape plan, you should be receiving that in the next day or two, that you will be able to have input in. And that's part of why it's coming to you is for your, uh, review and input as well. The fencing is, uh, I mean, the project's not complete, the sewer was turned on Tanaka. There is a, I found out from the engineer also late this evening, that is, uh, the regulation was that by, I think it's A D Q and Health Department, the regulatory requirements were that we plug that line when we turn on the other line. And they said that was done and we don't have the ability to turn the other line back to the, uh, other system. Plus, I do know, and I suspect, um, I know that the golf course has been chomping at bits, calling me every few days, asking when it would be live so they could start ripping up the drip field and putting in their water, uh, their irrigation system. And so I know that they've been like, they told me they were ready to do that by the end of January and the materials are on site, so I expect that the day they found out, they probably started that project. But I haven't got confirmation from them yet because, again, there is, uh, limitations on people that are on vacation this week, but the, um, even if they haven't destroyed the drip field, my understanding is that it's, uh, the line is plugged going up the hill. I have worked with the, uh, engineers and told them May sixth is a problem and it needs to be a priority. And the company has stuff scheduled between now and then and that's their first scheduling opportunity and they've got stuff beyond that. But we were put on a cancellation list, so if anyone cancels, they will jump to us next for that cancellation time.
Is that the only option?
That is the only option they've given me so far now. A couple of people I could talk to that might know more with the engineering firm will be back Monday, but I can't talk to them right now, I've reached out and wherever they are, they either don't have, uh, cell phone coverage or they're not taking advantage of it because they have not returned calls.
So the whole engineering firm has gone on vacation?
Uh, not all of them, but a significant number of them, yes.
Ms. Mayor, can I ask, I'm like, uh, so when all it happened, I mean, when did that?
They turned it on late Friday evening, I found out about it, uh, Monday. I actually got a text from Tal, I think over the weekend, and that's when I confirmed on Monday.
So let, let, let me get this, so they turned it off because you knowing, because anybody know?
I knew they'd been working on it for a week and a half.
Yeah, working on it is different than turning it on, that's, I'm getting frustrated because I don't understand how did that happen? How come you didn't know anything about all this? I'm on a sewer committee, you're on a sewer committee, you had meeting and meeting, this is first time I'm hearing that. And I don't understand why any of us, somebody didn't bring it up in me.
They were, uh, routinely contacting me throughout the day, but they initially hit a, uh, vacated line out there that no one knew was vacated. We didn't know a sewer line had been vacated and a sewer main had been vacated and they had to run, uh, cameras up and down it to find, then they found the right one. I knew they were on the right one, I expected them to turn it on that Friday, but I didn't get confirmation that they turned it on because it was, uh, late in the day and I got my confirmation Monday morning.
I mean, just, you know, man just said that he's been emailing back and forth for a while and.
And he's been texting with me.
Texting back and forth for, but what I'm, what my concern is, if we have a sewer, sewer committee, which we do, shouldn't we discuss this and that? I mean, shouldn't we, shouldn't have, I mean, what good does it do if we don't discuss this stuff? Uh, we're not gonna waste my time and your time and everybody else. I'm really concerned that why wasn't, I wasn't, again, I don't know those communication issues that I wasn't really, nobody was aware, I mean, we sat down, we discussed issues, I, I had, this is first time I'm hearing about it. Uh, honestly, I'm really disappointed that why always hearing about that now? And if, you know, I discuss these issues in a water and sewer committee, then we need to shut it down, shut it down. Honestly, shut it down.
How did they find the line that they didn't know about?
Because I don't know of anyone, I've even asked Justin, he's been involved with the city almost as long as I have, and no one remembers a, the ten-inch sewer line breaking out there where it goes under the creek. We've had water line breaks there, we all remember the water line breaks, but they hit a ten-inch line that went under the creek and they turned it on and nothing flowed.
Turned the line on?
They tried to turn the line on to the, uh, the lift station and nothing was in it. And they went back with cameras to find out why, thinking maybe there's a faulty valve and they found a plug.
Well, if we're not gonna use it in the first place, what's to do?
And so, but I mean, it was abandoned at some time when it was obviously broken and it's been replaced, but no one, the engineers were unaware of the replacement, we were unaware. I've been involved for years, I had not heard of the water line, or sewer line break out there. They spent two or three days trying to find why that one wasn't flowing because no one thought there was another.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
They always say, really, we're not discussing that line, I'm sure they're gonna be lying, they're gonna be issue, we gotta vote high, we gotta hope that they're gonna vote higher, higher staff. However, my concern is that this type of ticket or communication that comes in, why are we not getting those? That's what, at least me, I, I'd like to know why we're not getting it, this is.
And I understand, I was spending time trying to get engineers involved in fixing this smell problem and I was working in, in trying to get information from the ones that were away, trying to get, find out who to talk to that was here and who was covering for them and working with them to try to get somewhere with it. This is not your typical everyday situation with everyone gone.
But what, but he said he's been texting for a while, or what is?
It started over the weekend over this issue.
And previous communication over the email that he sent, I guess he said the.
So, yes, sir, I brought up two, two, two different issues, yeah. The one is the smell that started, uh, really soon, some of the stations turned on on Friday. Uh, and then we gave it a day, we're like, well, maybe that's just the first removal of the swab and then two, we drive it up, uh, and then it's still like through today. Uh, it's, and that's when I brought home, uh, air quality here today and to make, to take readings from, from all the places.
And the second issue was the?
And then, and then apart from that, just, uh, with general concerns of how, uh, very little consideration has been given to, uh, the compatibility with being right next to a residential neighborhood. Uh, I've got a whole list of emails, I've got a whole list of, of, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna type it up in email, uh, each specific one, uh, but just generally speaking, um, the, the very things that we would require as a city for developer to come in and put something, put a commercial business in or put an industrial business in, uh, the very processes that we would require, um, just were not adhered to. And there's a lot of things, uh, very, very basic things that were, that were missed. Um, most recently, like I said, lighting, landscaping, a couple of other pretty big issues, uh, setbacks. Um, uh, there are, there are pretty simple problems, uh, that we addressed in the planning commission, uh, that I sat down and worked and we went through these very things. Uh, so that, uh, I asked a question over a year ago, um, hey, I, I'm sitting on planning commission, uh, why, why didn't this project come through? Um, and there really wasn't an answer, uh, there, there really wasn't a, an answer provided to me.
I think as a city, um, things like, you know, like the scissor tail swab. I talked to some planning commissioners, well, they're not involved in things like that. So I think since we went to NACA, since it's something that will be needed, I think in our, there's a flaw in our ordinance is when something needs to be built by the city, that I think it should go through the planning commission, even though it's, it doesn't, it doesn't pass the planning commission like a lift station. That aspect of the planning commission needs, it needs to be under their thumb to say, okay, what is required, that must have a lift station, we need this lift station. Okay, what can we do as in landscaping? And, okay, it doesn't have this setback, is there a variance for this or can, can we make that setback happen? So I think as a city, that it needed to go to NACA, the lift station needed to be there. So I think as a city, that it needed to go to NACA, the lift station needed to be there. And so I, it did go through planning, just like, hey, it would have been nice for planning just to give us their two cents on the land swap. In my opinion, it didn't have to though. They came to us. And so the lift station, NACA, came to us. It doesn't go through planning because it's not something as someone wants, it's something that our city needs and we're deciding to go to NACA. So I think there is a, a gap.
Eric, along with, yeah, and we're not here complaining that the lift station's there, but we, we understand that it's very much needed. I mean, for years I installed site work and installed lift stations. Like I, I, I need it, like that's, I, I, I'm, so I'm not here complaining that the fact that it is there and it's up and running. That, that's not complaining at all that we're, that we're bringing to the, through to the council. Just want to make sure we're clear about it.
How long have you been asking for a landscape plan?
I, it was approximately eight months from the first time I asked for it to the time I got an answer that said, we don't have it.
Eight months?
I, I'm happy to afford every email that I sent. I'm happy to afford every text message that, that I've sent. Yes, it was approximately eight months from the time, can, can I get this? Yes, you can have this. No, we don't have one. We'll, we'll get a couple truths planned out as the first thing.
And who is that communication supposed to go to? Is it supposed to go to everyone affected? Because like for me as an example, I live two houses down from him, so I wanna make sure that, you know, opinions or whatever you need in regards to the landscaping, that communication goes to me too. Because it does affect us. So I think that's important. And that's, and that's one of the things I think, obviously in the mission in general, is lack of communication, you know, just from the start. Because we even know, you know, my wife and I did not know that this project was happening in the first place. I heard from a tap. And so in anything regarding updates from that, heard from Tal or from when I called you off, I'm not gonna lie.
Do we, do we send out? We probably don't because it doesn't go through the planning.
And not everybody gives input. Some people don't want bothered. They have to.
I think maybe some of that, the lift station, you could send out, like if the city's going to do a project, just like if the city is going to rezone something. So again, there's that gap. If the city is going to rezone something that is city property where, or like just like NACA, we have to have lift stations. I think we should send out something to say, this lift station will be installed this day. We have public comments, come to the council meeting.
Right.
Or things like that. I think, I think it's a good learning example and also not to turn it on Friday or again.
Well, then I understand that as well, but there's also a couple of other reasons to this. And if you're, I mean, if you'll call in like your information, we'll be sure you're in, or email me, we'll be sure that you're included. We always, anyone that does reach out, I keep them included. I keep them informed. Some people are bothered by you knocking on the door because they work nights. They're bothered by you bothering.
No one's saying anything to them. You just send out.
So, well, let's give them the email or text.
No, 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 just saying when the lift station even went up, I think as a city, we should have said, hey, this is, this is coming.
Yeah.
This is coming. This is, I mean, because we require it for rezoning. This is coming. I think we should send that out as a city to say, hey, a lift station will be installed. This is why, this is for NACA. So people have it on the radar.
I think that's a common curse.
I think so, but I think that's really bad.
Like a trash.
And nearly every subdivision that has gone in on the, on the step system has gone through planning and has it next, and has a lift station, at least one in the subdivision.
Understood, but this is something different.
With the smaller setbacks than this is.
Understood, but I'm saying moving forward, anything like, anything like this, I don't know what possibly could come to our city again. Moving forwards, since it's not going through the planning commission, but the planning commission should have an eye on it, whether, you know, council, for example, not, of, hey, this is going in. Let's look at it from a landscape. Let's, let's look at the setbacks, see if they can work it. If not, you know, whatever. I think they should, they should, they, we should utilize the planning commission for more than just rezonements and things like that. I think that if we ever add it on to City Hall, let's get it approved. Send it to the, to the planning commission. Have them look at it, look at the ins and the outs and things like that. I think as a city, that's what we should be doing.
So as a, as in water and sewer committee, we decided that we could have open ticket and they go and fix it, they will follow up with the customer line to make sure that it's been done. It's been tried to make sure that common courtesy and taking care of our folks. I think the same thing should be happening for a big project like that. I really am surprised that they turned it on and nobody replaces on vacation and they don't have anybody. Honestly, that was a good, that was.
I understand.
I was gonna mention one thing David was up here earlier talking about revisions and changes to zoning ordinances. If, if, you know, looking at that issue about city projects, if you want that to go forward through, through those, you can do that.
I mean, then.
But a, a sewer implement doesn't go through a zoning review.
Understood.
And that, that never has in the past. But, but as far as like, what you're talking about on city projects, like addition to City Hall or some type of, you know, a new building or whatever, that is something that can change in the future should the zoning regulations do this review that's starting, that may be something to make note of kind of going forward.
Or if we normal lift station, we have to have a lift station. Well, what, it's different when it's with, with this, in the subdivision, it's planned for. This is something that is, that would be for NACA. You know, it would have been nice to, I guess, I kind of thought those things were happening at the, at the landscape areas.
If I was in a subdivision and they were gonna put a lift station in behind me brand new, goes to a city, I'd wanna know what happens.
I would.
Exactly.
So, and then also, one comment is you can always contact your council members. Every single one of us represents every single resident. You can always contact your council members if you feel that you aren't being heard. I bet you contacted the planning commissioner who contacted me and I contacted the mayor. And then, you know, we had our discussion. So, and that's how, and why I added it to the updates.
I think the main thing I'm hearing is we need to stop the bleeding in terms of the smell. If there's gas, that shouldn't happen. I mean, if there's gas leaking, it, it sounds like, you know, there's a, something wrong with the pipes.
It's not, it's, the odor's just not been turned on yet. It's wrong.
But I mean, why, why would anything even come up? All this stuff's in a pipe, right? It's contained, it's closed.
So that you don't have air pockets go down and break the lines.
Okay, all right. I guess I didn't understand the system well enough, but it just, it seems like we need the, that's the most important thing to address immediately. When you talk about landscaping and stuff like that, that I think we just, that needs like all the answers and data.
And we've been working on that and trying to get, the engineers are the project managers. The engineers make sure everything's done to our, our city standards and they've got copies of those standards. That's the reason why usually a major city project that's done through bonds and has a project manager is managed through the project manager. And the, but they're still required to meet the same standards and they know those standards. So there's gonna be reviews done over the process and, and how it ended up at this point. But first, I've been trying to get the people involved and move the process up to actually get the odor addressed and taken care of at the first possible opportunity. I made it clear that this is serious and we need to address this sooner and
Who's looking?
That six weeks was not acceptable. I talked to Barrett, one of our engineers like this afternoon that's working on it.
Okay, okay.
And he reached, he's the one that reached back out at me at five, or to me at five thirty.
It's always there in Beijing, and that's the best we can do for now, but, okay, all right.
Six does a little much.
It does some, yeah, the ETS.
And how is that? I think it's an ocean by ocean.
Real, um.
What? Ocean, okay, okay.
Well, still should, yeah, still should.
Yeah, no, I don't want that.
Real, yeah.
I really think this type of issue should have brought up today.
And I understand.
So water and sewer committees, we could discuss it probably. I promise you, if it was brought up, I would say we don't have it. Let's make sure somebody's in there.
No, I understand.
I appreciate that, yeah.
So yeah, I guess, I guess I have two questions for the council. One, when, when can we expect some sort of answer on, are we just living with this for the next six weeks? Is that really my answer? I guess that's been.
Well, I think we just talked about it, right? I think we just talked about it.
So my, so my question would be?
We don't know. They're looking at it.
Well, because why?
Hey guys, by the way, I, I had, I had heard stuff that you're, so we already talked about that question and I just talked about it. And the mayor just talked about it. We got, somebody looking.
We get that, but we.
So let's move on. That's your question. We, we just talked about it.
I, I didn't have any questions there.
That doesn't really answer our question.
We don't know. I'm sorry.
We don't know.
Working with the engineer, I, we don't know.
So are you listening? We don't know.
Yeah, we're listening.
We don't know. I don't know. We really don't know.
We don't know we're not living in it.
Understood, but this isn't doing any good. This isn't a question. And, and we do have other things on the agenda, which is, it's a huge problem. Mayor, could you update them every other day on the status of this?
I'm updating more frequently than that.
He is updating.
I haven't been communicating once.
I've not been receiving any.
I have, I've been communicating multiple times, I will say.
Now, could you send the mayor an email and include everybody in your development that wants an update? So the mayor can just reply to it. Like, send the mayor and everybody's email. Like, CC everybody, so the mayor can update everybody. So you're not the spokesperson. Everybody that wants to be updated in your neighborhood, could you compile an email list?
Sure, sure.
And then send that email list to the mayor. And then the mayor can update everybody at once. Mayor, does that sound like a plan?
That's perfectly.
That's a plan. So any more updates will come from the mayor and he will, if you could then mail this to him right away, he can update you. I'll have to, mayor.
I will, at least twice a day.
At least twice a day. He'll do an AM update and a PM update of any updates because otherwise our, our hands are tied.
Long weekends, I don't always have access to.
And then they might go answering anyway. So, okay.
And then I, I just, one, my, with the councilante seeing this project in the commission, just to have been.
I think that's something that will, let's, let's address the smell. And then we'll touch base about it because that's like Mark said, that's like the primary concern, right, is the stench. And we'll work, something maybe we can work on later, mayor?
Yes.
Okay, and he said he would send that to you anyway, tell, so then you can respond to everybody's email all at the same time of everything, once he gets that. Does that sound good? Looking forward? Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Next item on the agenda is the follow-ups. We just did the lift station follow-up. The R dot traffic study, there was another request made out of traffic study at Ford Lane. And that traffic study, again, once the new subdivision starts, has significant number of imp, or significant impact on the intersection. The R dot said that they would entertain a study at that time, but they don't do speculative traffic studies based on expectations. They do what's actually occurring. The traffic light update that we did pre-construction meeting last week and components were ordered. Power line is, or when the power line is moved and components arrive, they estimate it will take about a week to install.
Chief, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Wasn't there a bad wreck up there at that intersection?
Yes, just the other day.
There were two people laying on the ground. Were they injured badly?
Scott, we knew the accident, the, that rainbow, two sixty four, the other day.
Yes.
He, he, he was there. He's asking the, a couple people drank over.
Uh, that was Friday, if I'm not mistaken, yes.
I think so.
Um, I.
I saw Danny at church and he told me.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, everybody survived. It was nothing serious, no serious injuries.
Was it a T-bone?
Yeah, well, yes. It, I mean, it, it was a glancing T-bone, yes. Yeah, one guy tried to cut all the way across, went north and south, and the westbound car hit the back, I think.
I wonder how many of them we have to have before it gets R dot's attention?
That's a great question.
Yeah.
You can't pass on that street during, uh, in the morning or in the evening.
Yeah, it's, it's, especially that time of day.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And then do you have any updates on the S L Ps?
Uh, Will will be helping. He'll hear.
Yeah, I, I've started.
Yeah, we, we, we met on it, I can't remember who it was, Will, about a month ago. And, uh, uh, Will is working on a setup, we're in that, we've got time. We'd have to delay several times on it because of power line issues. And work.
It's so, yeah. How long before we get a traffic plan?
Uh, they've ordered all the components. As quick as the components get here, they will have nothing by week.
Unfortunately, that's not true, mayor. Because I was contacted by McQuellin Engineering and they still have to get easements.
They do have to get easements, but they have ordered the parts.
But they can't do anything without.
They are going to be working with you and one other person about easements. That's correct.
Because I had asked Daniel Barnes about a year and a half ago when all this started, if he needed to get any easement agreements. And he said, nope, 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 we're good, we're good, we're good. And then I get an email last week saying that we need to get an easement agreement from him.
Thanks, oh.
To get a life.
First, did the design without the, the inside of the edge of the right way?
So in a nutshell, Mike, it, it'll be a lot.
So, we don't know. It could be December.
Don't know.
Oh my gosh.
I've been waiting on Cassie Elliott to get with me about an easement.
Listen.
Lack of communication.
Next item is a resolution confirming the appointment of Emily Westfall to the planning mission. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Someone.
Got a motion by Eric, do I hear a second? Second by Jeremy. All in favor, say aye. Hopefully discussion.
Yes. Are you sure you wanna do this?
Uh, yes, sir.
Any other?
Don't give her a chance to think.
Yeah, I have, I want to take this number. Yeah, thank you guys for having me.
We're watching.
Twenty twenty-five dash fourteen is the resolution.
Fourteen?
Fourteen, did you say?
Yes. So any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. That is approved. Congratulations. And thank you for, for doing this. Next item is a resolution to appropriate funds and authorize the mayor to negotiate an executive contract to extend the core and main contract for meter service and reading. Do I hear a motion to approve?
We'll get through it.
Got a motion by Mark, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by MC. I just found out this past week, or about a week and a half ago, they have put the final radio read meter in the ground. Lady that'll be doing the training has been doing the meter replacement and they finished that about two weeks ago. So now she will be focusing more on training, making sure that all of them are programmed right and that we're not having any serious concerns. The last meter read she did, she did the whole city in an hour and a half and only had three re-reads to do. So huge improvement over what we've had. So any further discussion?
The only charge is adding a thousand dollars training charge.
And that's?
Limit.
Okay.
Any days they are not actively reading our building. Okay.
Right. That's if it's a special trip on them. And so she will be having people working with her during the readings and training them during each reading and service.
And how long does this last?
This is requesting for six months on it.
It doesn't say it in here.
Second, two. Okay, and I don't mind if we edit it to say that, but I.
It doesn't say for three, six months. It doesn't?
Yeah. There it is.
Oh, yeah.
There had been discussions about it being longer and, and we are wanting to be sure everyone's trained that needs to be trained within that six months. So any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. And that is. And that is passed, and that's fifteen. Next item, a resolution to amend the twenty twenty-five budget and appropriate funds from City General to the Cave Springs Community Building Improvement Fund for the approved expenditures for the Cave Springs Community Building Restoration. We're not asking for anything that has not prior, had prior approval. But, uh, there are less funds in there than will cover the prior approvals. And the, uh, it wasn't, and this is oversight on my part, but it was not budgeted for. So this actually puts it in this year's budget with amounts that were approved for.
A hundred and thirty-two thousand?
A hundred and thirty-two thousand.
So how much is this whole thing gonna cost now?
Uh, nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand on the building itself. And then I have, I'm working on the, uh, appliances and the furniture, but I do have those invoices and you're gonna get it though. But this is the, I'm not requesting anything added at all. It's the things you have already.
This, this is a hundred and thirty-two thousand plus sixty-two thousand?
No. There is currently.
Inappropriate.
Yeah, it's only, it's adding sixty-two thousand to what's already in the fund. For a total in the fund of one hundred and thirty-two thousand to close out the bills.
So what was the budget?
The budget was that.
That this is, if a hundred and thirty-two is wrong, what, it was off by sixty-two thousand?
There was, yes, there was seventy thou, a hundred and thirty-two thousand is not wrong. There was seventy thousand in the fund. It takes a hundred and thirty-two thousand to close everything out, to pay all the bills that were.
Maybe sixty-two thousand.
Into the fund that wasn't transferred when you approved the purchases prior.
Our current balance in that account is seventy thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-four cents.
Right.
And we need a hundred and thirty-two thousand?
I just received an invoice from SSI last week for ninety-six thousand dollars.
Right.
So.
We only need ninety-six?
No.
No.
There, there are some other bills that we are still, invoices we are still paying for, uh, other components.
So we're, we're twenty-six thousand dollars in the hole already if we pay the, the SSI bill. So, to, to finish out the rest of the project, you're gonna have to have more money transferred, and that's what he's asking for.
This is what.
This is what.
Hold on, hold on, stop that. These are all approved expenditures and everything, this, this is just a budgetary move. Have to put money into the fund in order to pay the amount.
The.
Project costs.
Are approved.
The, yeah, everything's been, this is all from approved expenditures, exactly, yeah. So this doesn't change the project cost.
This, that, the ninety-six thousand is to pay the retainage that was withheld. It's all within the contract. We did not go over the contract.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign?
I don't vote.
Okay, we've got, uh, it passed with one extension.
Who made the motion and who seconded on that one?
I don't think it was.
I don't think it was.
Okay, then let's start that again. I thought we had that before I got into the discussion, but. The, uh, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'm moving through.
Okay, second.
Second.
Motion by Mark, second by Jeremy. Now, uh, the, uh, do all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign?
Abstain.
We got, uh, four in favor, one extension, and, uh, Mike abstaining. So it did pass. That is item sixteen. Next item is the resolution to adopt regulations for the operation of public facilities within the city of Cave Springs. This is what we need to be able to go ahead and, and rent this building out. It's what we need, it actually addresses Hart Pavilion and everything else within the same document to handle it all uniformly and through a, a nice professional process. So, uh, do I hear a motion to approve?
No.
I don't think I have that one.
That's the one I said over here that was separate from your packet that we just got done. Should do that exhibit A and B.
Here?
Yeah, what's that?
Second.
Oh, this, this is ordinance, mayor?
Uh, yes, sir. It says ordinance is very tough. I just noticed it should say resolution.
Okay, I was reading the title below, so.
Yeah.
Uh, do we need to amend that?
Yeah, it's just a, it's a script.
Okay, I entertain a motion to amend the top title to resolution. Got, uh, uh, motion for M C, do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Second by Mark. Any discussion of changing it to a resolution? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign? That did pass. Uh, now, it's a resolution, and do I hear a motion to approve?
I'm moving through.
Mark moved to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Jeremy. Any further discussion?
Did we add?
We just had to buy it.
Did we add in this, that the city employees can use the facility of no charge?
It says, uh.
Page three, section, uh, eight.
It's, yeah, it's an A F, yeah, A F.
Sorry, I just got my packet right before the council, so I didn't have a chance to look at it.
We just got this tonight too.
Yeah, that'd be.
And I had it this afternoon, so it's.
Facility use regulations is eight and then insurance is?
Eight. Uh, shoot. Thing was giving me fits on the number.
So then all those other numbers have changed?
Yeah. Thank you, how, uh. The break. Yeah, I'll send a corrected one on the number.
Need further discussion?
Justin, on section four B, uh, mayor requesting facility on time review should be on time review.
Yep. One of the things about, uh.
Four B, right?
What about? Can we table this? Yes, I haven't even had a chance to read it since.
Well, my concern is we've got, uh, some of those people that are longtime people here that are looking to have services.
My concern is I haven't had a chance to read it, so I'm not gonna vote for it.
That's right.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Uh, there. Since my mail didn't work today, on the, on the very back page is a, uh, schedule of fees. And I, that was, I think this is roughly the same as what was looked at at the, uh, uh, committee meeting, work session. Are, are there any issues with the, with the schedule of fees?
Do you have staff on there?
I'm sorry?
Is there staff on there? Is the reservations not as low as they were? Like for the bereavement stuff we talked about, like, does that mean there, when you got that on there, is that just kind of a thing? Is that a same kind of shortage?
We haven't talked about any of this. I mean, this is. There's still, there's a lot of meat on there. We haven't talked about any of these details in the working session. We just said, oh, we will have the details. And my email, thanks to our IT provider, was not working all weekend and, you know, I couldn't get a chance to read it, so.
Can we, can we?
I suggest we table it.
Can we table this, but as a council? Approve the, the bereavement stuff?
Is that this weekend? I don't know which weeks it was. I know there's two and, or there's two in April. Two little, uh, actual, uh, celebration blocks.
Erica?
Yes.
Is the, is the agreement, uh, I, I, I don't know about that issue. It's a free, free of charge.
Yes, we're free of place, that's what we're talking.
I think you can make a motion for the month of April, just to get us through until we get these.
Okay.
That'll reduce.
Okay. Make a motion to what?
Uh, if I can change you right, the, uh.
Need to allow the bereavement use by employee, employee.
A motion to approve the current reservations for bereavement use for city employees. And the one exception.
City officials.
City officials, because that, does that say costing current?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's close to.
But I would like to.
Yeah.
I have an issue with my email.
Okay.
Attachments.
I got a motion from, uh, Erica's second from M C to make that the, uh, the, to make the building available free of charge to, uh, current and past employees and, uh.
For the month of April?
Oper, uh, yeah, and, uh, officials for, uh, bereavement use from the month of April to, and, uh.
Table the rest until?
We will get to the table as soon as we pass this one.
Oh.
Uh, do we have, or is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign? And then number, our next, I would entertain a motion to table this resolution.
Let's go table it.
Got a motion from Jeremy, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from, uh, the, uh, Mike, and all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, and that was approved. Next is the resolution updating the signatories at the bank. And do I hear a motion to approve?
I'd like to, I'd like to, um. Can I amend this?
Yes, you can.
I would like to add Kim to all of them.
Okay, that will, to add Kim as a fourth signator to all of them. And do I hear a second on that?
Second.
Second by Jeremy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
I'd like to make a discussion on this, actually. I'm curious on why we're adding water and sewer clerks to city funds. Why are we asking, why are we having two water clerks for city accounts?
I stopped in and asked the mayor specifically about that. And to me now it makes sense, because when they reserve the reservations, you know, please correct if I'm wrong. If I'm wrong, when they reserve, like, the park, they go to the water and sewer department. So it makes sense for me to have those people on there, because I was confused as well, um, since they.
But they have nothing to do with the funds.
And that's what we're fixing, because right now, this building is done, Eric, will be done very similar to the park. It's going to have the same reservation process, the same people.
Correct, but they still don't have anything to do with the funds.
And that's what we're fixing, because right now, the, we have a public works director that's over the park. He's over streets, he's over, uh, his people will be the ones checking this building. If there's some minor cleanup or whatever, it's his people that will be maintaining this building in that regard.
Has nothing to do with the funds.
And again, that's what we're fixing, because when you pay for repairs, when you pay for things that are done on the tractors in the park, in the public works department, the public works department should be over those funds, that. Uh, everything to do with that. The employees for the street department that are paid out of the street department are his employees. They're not.
So.
City, or they're not, uh, employees of the other area. They're employees of the street department as part of the.
Correct, they're just, you're giving them the authority to just sign checks. That's all you're giving them the authority to do. You're not giving the authority to write checks or deposit checks into those accounts. So that has nothing to do with what you're talking about.
Is it to sign checks to give back deposits?
That's all you're asking me to do.
It would be for deposits, it would be for repairs, it would be for maintenance, it would be for the employees that maintain this building.
Those are city funds. You cannot co-mingle, you, the council said right here.
There is an account for this.
I understand, but you're sitting here and those are, water and sewer are, water and sewer employees, okay? That'd be no different than me still paying the water and sewer bills. That'd be no different.
The.
And the council.
Department is also water and sewer employees.
I pay water and sewer and street payroll too, so I mean, technically, if you wanna look at it that way. But that's not the point. The point is, they do not need access to city financial accounts, period. At all. They don't need to sign the checks. That needs to stay the way that it is, because when you have too many chiefs in an account, it's all gonna be chaos.
It is chaos.
No, it is not chaos. I have a book of everything.
Each one of these ordinances or resolutions that we passed to make these appropriations would have had funds put into the account.
With the resolution that was passed tonight, it would have been, sir. But the resolution has never been passed for that to be done, so I can't transfer funds unless the resolution is passed by the council.
Each one was passed individually by the council.
And they were added. I'm sorry that you didn't budget correctly, period, you just said.
The budget pieces, one piece, the fact of the matter is, the water and sewer. They were not added.
You need to stop. The water and sewer employees do not need to have access to city funds, period.
The street department and the, this building, just like the park, should not be run through the, uh.
So what you're doing is, is you're giving access to myself, to Penny, to Julie, and whoever to write checks out of that account. That's what you're just saying, because you're saying signers, and now you went in and changed it from signers to, oh, well, now they can write checks and make deposits and take all these funds.
And they not take all these funds, they can take care of business in a timely manner.
The, it is getting taken care of in a timely manner. Yes, it is, sir.
I can show you documents.
And I'm gonna call you a liar.
I know you will.
Straight, straight wheel, because I can look at these checks.
Where they're not getting paid on that.
That is incorrect. That is incorrect.
Not at all, I don't.
Show me.
Will glad to.
Please, and I want you to, you make sure you email the council on it and well, because you are lying.
Mayor, do you want to bring it back to the council?
Yes, please. So, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Um, I, you know what, I need to make a motion to table this. This is, there's, there's too much. I do not feel comfortable voting on it now. That is how I feel, because there's too much back and forth for me to feel confident to move forward on a vote.
We have a motion to table, do we hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any further discussion?
We're making a forward.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign?
Who seconded that?
That is.
Mike, Mike tabled, or Mike seconded.
Next item on the agenda. Is the resolution to approve the, uh, well, the resolution to approve the change order for the city portion of R dot's, uh, state aid overlay. That, that needs, it should be there, but it, oh, it was taken out, because I'm asking for it to be taken. Do I hear a motion to the table? Got a motion from Mike, do I hear a second? Oh, was that M C? I'm sorry. Got a motion from M C, do I hear a second? Erica's second? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign? The next item, it did approve, and the next item is an ordinance to purchase our carbon crush truck. Do I hear a motion to approve? Got a motion by Jeremy, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, uh, discussion?
Is that a, a ordinance?
What's that, a ordinance, though?
It is.
I don't actually have the ordinance in here.
Okay, and it was a motion to approve anyway. Do you have, uh, what?
Got it, I had it.
I'm sorry, I have.
So, it, it is actually a resolution, and it can be passed by, uh, it can be passed by voice motion. So, it, it is actually a resolution, and it can be passed by, uh, it can be passed by voice motion, and I can bring it back, and we can bring it back and we can, um-
I thought it required an ordinance, because it's at eight thirty-three funds, and you were going to get me that, because-
Oh, this is what that issue, no, that's not, that's not ready, that won't be ready.
Okay.
Yeah, that's-
We may bring this to the work session and a couple other things.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
As, uh-
This is a, uh-
Call of work session.
This is a seventy-eight ordinance, and that's, that's not, that's not ready yet.
Okay.
So, we can order tomorrow?
No, because it require, it's a bond, and it's a short-term financing bond, and that requires a, uh, ordinance to be, uh, to be drafted by the, uh, by the finance company.
Going another month without ordering this truck, we're having problems. I mean, we've had like ten grass owners in the past two years.
That's why I said we may have to do it as a special meeting, when he gets the stuff in.
Justin, you know, we can get the stuff in, so that we can, as a council-
Well, I can give it to the work session, but it, it requires drafting of a bond ordinance, which is-
Like thing?
I, I have to do some double checking, uh, but, uh, it is a little bit busy, but I can have it prepared for the work session.
Sure.
Okay.
So, mayor, are you gonna advertise for that?
That's why it wasn't arranged, why we took it.
Are you gonna advertise for that as a, as a special?
Uh, that would be following this guidance, literally, exactly, as required, you know?
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion to table that? Got a motion by Mike, do I hear a second? Second by Jeremy. Any, or all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like a sign? That is approved. The last ordinance, and I've entertained a motion that we've placed on third and final reading, the ordinance twenty eighteen dash three.
Twenty-five.
Or, I mean, yes.
This ordinance does it in twenty eighteen dash three.
Yeah, it's the ordinance amending ordinance twenty eighteen dash three. And do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and place that on third and final reading?
So.
Got a motion by Erica, do I hear a second?
I have to comment if it, if it's time.
I do have a second by Mike. Uh, and right now, we're just discussing the third reading. So, go ahead.
Mr. Siri, you're going to, uh, accuse, if we do that, we can't, you can't.
We can't get a, uh-
Yes, exactly.
Vote, because I can't vote on, on suspension of the rule. So, uh, I would entertain a motion to table. Got a motion by Erica, do I hear a second?
Mayor, do you mind if I, can I say this, oh, I think it may help in the future, this, a word or two about the ordinance?
Sure.
This is the new version from the one that you saw last time. The, the, the change is in, well, there, I, I, there are a couple things taken out about removal of duties that was language that was in the two thousand eighteen ordinance that was removed. Uh, but you, uh, uh, section five, which it outlines the dues of the director, uh, is tied to the statutory requirements in municipal county law, so that's under, uh, number one, any group through G, and then it has the other, uh, other responsibilities that are there. So, uh, uh, those are all set forth there, that's, that's the new part. So, on that page, page four, that's largely, largely made. So, I want to point that out, council, what we talked about last time was kind of making that clear tie to the statutory, dashboard duties. Are there any questions, Clark? No?
And I sat down with Justin last week, week four, and we went over this. And I, I asked him when we did this if we could pass this ordinance with also a job description at the same time, so then that way, um, there's no gray area on what my job duties are to the council and what my duties are. So, what I would recommend is that we discuss the, my duties in a work session. Uh, and that's what I gave you all tonight, so we can let those, look those over and, um, see what needs to be reevaluated.
Did you give that to Justin?
I did.
Yeah, I'm working on the, the job duty, uh, and also for the, uh, the administrative assistant is working on payroll, so that job description needs to be changed as well, so all those are gonna come forward.
And then within these duties, her assistant can we lay out what she can do as well?
Right.
Can't leave the office.
Do you want? Not yet. Do we, uh, all in favor tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
And that did pass, so, does I vote, uh, aye as well? And is there anything else, or I entertain a motion to Jeremy?
Can we make sure that we have that fair due, uh, not fair due, fair, fair way, goodness, goodness, fair way legislation on every update?
It's on there.
Okay, I just wanna make sure it's-
Yeah, I have it. Got a motion from Erica to Jeremy, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, thank you all.